In Columbia County for almost 20 years, I'm proposing to rezone the 33 acres along Mulliken Road. This piece of property has basically been vacant. And that is why it's zoned, the R1 zoning. And if you actually read through the Exhibit A that I've provided for y'all, the Columbia County Growth Management Plan Partial Update 2011 through 2016, page 20, what that's basically saying is this piece of property was rural and that's why it's zoned R1. Eventually, the sewer got ran and this is not considered a rural piece of property. And so by that, there is an opportunity to increase the density and change the zoning which I'm currently asking for. If you look at Exhibit B, for every subdivision up and down Mulliken Road, okay? Most 90% of those subdivisions, the minimum lot size is 10,000 square feet or below. Okay, there's only one subdivision and that is Sumter Landing that actually has lots bigger than the one I'm proposing and it's at 12,000 square feet. The R2 zoning that I'm proposing allows me to go down to 10,000 square feet. I'm only offering 11,700 square feet. Also, my minimum width of my lots are 100 feet wide. Now, let me tell you, I've been building Columbia County for a while. I have yet to build on a lot that's 100 feet wide. I believe that the citizens of Columbia County, this is something that everybody wants. As everybody knows right now, the growth is all around us, but the housing shortage is just unbelievable. I believe that the people that want to move in Martinis, there's no new developments going on. So that's why I'm proposing this. Very excited about it. Also, I have delineated the wetlands and... Hold on, my piece of paper here. Did I give you my piece of paper of the wetland? I did.
Yes?
No, no, sir. But basically, it shows in the northwest corner that it's greater than .10 of an acre. It's less than a half an acre. So basically, I have not gotten the Corps involved and I would have to get a surveyor involved, but it is doable there. Next, I believe the biggest complaint that I heard throughout the last planning committee is everybody's concern with the river. Guys, in life, right now, you hear all about this stuff about the environment. What can we do? Well, this river, lot to me, it's everything. So I went back and researched this thing. I believe what affected this river was back in 2007 when Sumter Landing got developed. And there was two issues that caused this. Number one, it backs up directly to the river. I've got a large amount of property in between my property and that river. Number two, back in 2007, there were not the rules and regulations that Columbia County has in place to prevent this. So I believe that that was a key factor. I can assure you that Columbia County, I have been building here since the early part of 2000, they have done a tremendous job. I might not agree with them every day, but my subdivisions get shut down when there's dirt in the road. So they have definitely stepped up to the plate over the past few years. Also, I hired an engineer who helped come up and improve the rules and regulations. And I can attest and make sure that we will not damage or put anything into that river. Lastly, I do believe that I strongly feel like y'all should all approve this subdivision. It beats all the checks and balances. And again, y'all are looking for quality growth. There's not one subdivision I am building in Columbia County that has lots of this size, so... Any questions?
I do, I have a couple. When you're talking about the wetlands delineated, what did you mean?
It's not going to affect the road. I am able to put a road in there because it does not exceed the half acre.
Okay. All right. Next question I have, this is a proposed mass graded site, is that correct?
Correct.
With our regulations now, with a mass graded site, there's a 50-foot...
And it's on there, yes, sir.
I see that, but this is somebody's backyard that can come out and cut those...
Again, though, that's in...
And they want to because it's their property, is that correct?
Well, I cannot stop them, but what I can do is I can put it in the covenants to basically prevent that and find them.
And who's going to enforce that?
The HOA.
It will be an HOA?
Yes, sir.
But the HOA could go back and later change that to say, nevermind.
Or what we could do, depending on the lot size, but we're going to get in the push and pull, is I could basically put that as common area. So it depends on how you guys want to do this.
If that were common area, then that was not part of property. It would push your houses forward. You have to...
Again, you're correct, you're correct, but I mean, there's always what ifs. There's a lot of what ifs.
Wouldn't meet the intent of R2 zoning at that point either, would it, Mr. Blasky?
If the buffer was in common area, he would have to increase his lot size, well, excuse me. His lot size could stay the same, 10,000 square feet. His just property lines would move because the 50-foot buffer would not be part of the lot. So he'd have to reconfigure this.
And the setback in the backyard has to be...
On this one, we wouldn't have a rear setback. The 50-foot buffer's got to stay there because of the mass grading. If what you're asking him to do is put it on a common piece of property that the HOA controls, then his lot would have to stay at 10,000 square feet. But shift out towards the road, which means the road has to shift over, which means he loses lots. Density would go down if the common area gets bigger. That make sense?
Sir, I'm looking at a triangle that's bordered by... Oh, I'm sorry.
Hold, 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 can I...
We did discuss this early on.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Concessions that Mr. Blasky made was, he actually drew the lots showing the 50-foot buffer a lot closer to the yard. And one of the things that the staff brought up was people would have no backyard if you did this. So what Mr. Bennett was going to bring out is that, no, he doesn't have to redesign everything. It's just their backyards get really tiny. Guess that's where you were going.
Lot size would stay the same. Lot size would be...
Gary Bennett, 5810, Carreles Drive. The lot sizes would stay the same. They're actually 165 foot deep. If we took 50 foot off, they'd be 115 foot deep. They're still 100 foot wide, so it still would be over the 10,000 square foot minimum. But it's either whichever way makes more sense for y'all, actually. It doesn't really affect anything as far as the buildings go or the lot layout. You put it in HOA property, or you can put it in open space, or you can put it into each individual lot owner, whichever makes more sense.
It does.
And that would be, I mean, because if I lived on that and my neighbor cut beside me, I'm probably going to open that up also. And then I think our 50-foot from mass grading, our 50-foot buffer is going to disappear. And all of a sudden, it's gone, which would probably... Did that to, for looks and for runoff and erosion and all of that, is that correct?
We did.
That would keep that in place, then that would, some of the threats that we're talking about to the waters and the rivers and all of that, that would surely help that.
It would help, it would definitely help. Mr. Bennett actually wrote the code that you're talking about right now, so he does know it inside and out, so... We put the 50-foot buffer in there because of the similar zonings. When somebody mass grades a site, you don't want to have a nice backyard and all of a sudden you got a slope tucked right up to your backyard where in the past you just made that 50-foot buffer to allow those transitions to tie in, to also prevent complete runoff directly from your property right onto your neighbor's property. There's a lot of reasons that we wrote it.
And Mr. Richardson, also, the trees out there are the huge pine trees. So we're going to know and the homeowners are going to know when it's going to take a crane to come in there. You're just not going to go in your backyard and cut these sized trees down, so...
But we do know that there are some people that don't want a tree on their lot.
But if it's a concern, you can put that in HOA property and they can't touch it. That'd be trespassing.
But then when the house is in place, and that's hard for me to see this on this carry, I know you drew this, from the back of the house typical to the back lot line, if that was an HOA property, you'd have 25 feet?
Around 25 foot to the further set of the house. The house will actually be built with a patio and...
From the porch, so you're... So you'd hit somebody's backyard would be 33 feet deep?
Yes, sir.
Correct.
Sir, I was looking at your lots. The, I'm not sure about direction, but the shaded area of your wetlands pretty much covers what would become a county road. And it's bordered by lots look like 18 and 45. There going to be a wet problem there? Are we going to have a problem with direction of water?
You could build it, you can build it on top of the wetlands. You just have to do some additional. But you can build on top of the wetlands. And as we're only talking about two tenths of an acre of the wetlands anyway, so we're not going to be really impeding. Actually, the roadway won't be on the wetland area at all. It'll just be the shoulders.
All right, thank you. Do you have any slopes to tie in, Gary?
Is it pretty, pretty much, I had looked at the topo.
This is not a bad topo, actually, so it'll actually be just a gradual drop through the side.
Got the questions? Thank you.
One thing to point out, this is a, is a concept, but it's not a true concept. If this were to be approved tonight, it would still have to come back with a true concept review and a true concept approval. This is just a, an idea of what it could look like. So this is not what would be built if it were to go through. Does that make sense? He would have to come back with a true concept that shows what actual lot lines are after he does a lot more engineering.
Do we feel, or do you feel, or what are your thoughts on this not being a true concept, that the lot count would come back thing?
I don't know. I don't, I don't have his engineering. I have no idea. I don't think it would go up. I don't see it going up at all. It may come down.
It looks like it'd have to.
Going down Mulliken, there's a road, what is that road? And is there a lot of development on...
Bond Road?
No. Riverbound?
You talking this road here?
That goes into a subdivision that... And then right across.
This entrance right here.
How many, how many lots are in there? 46. I was trying to, I was trying to come up with what kind of traffic is at that.
If you want to speak, sir, come up front and, come up front and say your name and address. And for the record, I'm extremely aware of the school traffic.
Yes. Woody Bowles, I live at 4041 Mulliken Road. I live right here. I live right beside the property that's going to happen. 50-foot buffer would be lovely if this does get zoned. That was my attention, you know, if the property owner comes in, wants to clear the trees, I'm staring it at, I don't know how many houses, five, six, seven, 10 houses in the back. There's a bunch of wetlands.
Mr. Waters and I.
Actually have a lot of water that runs through our property. It runs off the county road, down through my property, and actually runs back there that, right in this general area where our properties meet, and joins that creek and runs out to the river. So you will have water issue coming off my property from the county property and the roadway and the ditches we have running down through there. Where that corresponds with his houses, I'm not quite sure. Is there another, the map? That one.
Six and a half houses, by the way.
Six and a half houses, okay. So water runs kind of like that and hits, well, I can't, like that and hits the creek, which comes off, you know, Mulliken Road. So that would be, put it this way, my kid has boogie board down through that water when it's raining. Tells you how much water goes through there. So will that be an issue? I would think so for one. You know, the traffic to school and all that stuff. I don't know what else to say. I just hate to see the land get, you know, masqueraded. Y'all talking about totally clear cut except for the 50-foot border, right? I wish Columbia County would just do like old school neighborhoods. They would just go inside, build a house, put a lot, then, you know, everybody have two or three acres, like old school properties. But that's not why. Thank you.
If the water's coming off the road, like through the stadium, going down through his property or between two properties or whatever, and now it's going across, whose job does it, at that point, to start adding that water?
That'd be the engineer of records' job to...
Once it hits the back of these lots, they would have to deal with it.
Correct.
They would design a plan to mitigate, right?
They would have to, yes, sir.
Somebody else is already standing, so... Come on, sir. Please state your name and address for the record.
Name is Joe Waters. My address is 4047 Mulliken Road. Understand a couple of weeks ago that the zoning committee it was denied, I feel correctly. I would have been there, but I didn't know about the meeting. Weren't my neighbor that heard and it was, in my opinion, very appropriately rejected. Only two years ago, I moved to that area. Remember Tractor Jack? Haven't been in there, look on the wall, see the history, that area. I have a little over three acres and I thought that I was going to the country. Neighbor had a cow and they also had a horse and I celebrated when the board, whose jurisdiction that is, I understand, made what I feel was the correct. Overriding that decision would be an error. Now, to give you an idea, I saw a school. I saw, I've seen all these communities develop. The related problems. Traffic is a very, very serious problem on that road, you know, with the school. You see the schools' traffic lined up on the road, no parking, no where to park. Every time I come out of my driveway, I look to the left and I see no cars coming. By the time I turn on the road, I look in, and I'm being tailgated. Now, talking about the water flowing and the erosion, what he correctly stated, it's a real problem. Fact, I am presently working on a French drain for a garage I just installed. And with every rain, there's this massive flood coming down the hill. Very disturbing. And before any decision is made on water, I invite any of you to come and look at the property I'm dealing with right now, because my tractor trying to hurt water. Very serious problem. So I think a lot of attention needs to be placed on that mere fact. But I think that inability to get fire trucks down to service other big population is a real challenge. I tell you, a lot of traffic on that road. There aren't but a couple of outlets that's coming back to fury. So I think a correct decision, you know, would be regrettable, I think, for the communities, those who are already there to have their property, property devalued because of smaller lots and high density population. I invite you to come by and look at the water problem. That's all I have to say.
And it is one of the general challenges we're faced with is private property rights. And this is generally, when somebody have your own land and you don't want somebody to develop or sell their land, it's a real challenge. It's probably the biggest challenge we face with this board is allowing private property rights, trying to maintain some sense of control over what's happening as you're... Yes, sir.
My name is Tanya Bonatatabus. I'm your Savannah River Keeper. So technically, I'm from Tobacco Road, but I'm here representing a group.
What's your address, please?
I'm sorry?
Your address for the record?
2837 Tobacco Road, Hepsiboro, Georgia 30815. That's Pregnancy Brain, that's a... I want to show you guys this real quick. This was the river two days ago.
I've seen it.
At Point Comfort Road. I'm sure a lot of you have seen it. But the idea, first off, that these projects don't have drastic effects on the river. This is the apartment complex across from River Island currently. But the fact is that, yes, I 100% agree Columbia County has done a much better job at managing its erosion and sedimentation over the last couple of years, no doubt. There is still a long way to go. And projects like this, can we go back to the lot layout, pretty please? Okay, all right, right here. So he is telling you there's less than one acre of wetlands on this property, right? But even on his own plans, this is a 33-acre site. How is that less than 133? See what I'm saying? Like even on his own plans, that equation doesn't work out. I apologize. I did not bring the same national inventory maps, the FEMA maps that I brought to the Planning and Zoning Department, but those outline that wetland is small. His delineation is small.
I think it says seven and a half acres.
I'm sorry?
I think it says seven and a half.
Yeah. And now he's sitting here telling you that it's less than an acre and he doesn't need a court permit? I'm going to have a heart attack.
If you look right here, he's actually showing his impact to the wetlands is less than that half acre, not the actual...
And we have, we have water, water going through. I disagree. The wetlands currently on the site are far bigger than the wetlands laid out here. And they are already receiving a tremendous amount of impact. If you actually, and when a delineation is properly done, you will find out that your density is going to be an even bigger issue, especially if you go with your 50-foot buffer. The one, there are, the mass grading, this is a site that has a decent amount of fall to it. The mass grading is going to only exacerbate the existing stormwater problems that Sumter Landing has exacerbated over the last couple of years. You have a lot of the landowners at the bottom that have been having continual problems with siltation of their wetlands, not to mention the people that are here today that have spoken very clearly about the stormwater issues that already exist. The fact is, you can delineate a wetland and then you can go sell it and buy a piece of property somewhere else. That's not going to stop the house that gets built on top of that from flooding. And it's also not going to stop the water from getting backed up and affecting the landowners upstream even more. That's called trespass. And I think this is very clearly a piece of property that you would be looking at under this type of density with trespass issues. The last thing I'll say is it's already zoned residential. He can build a certain number of houses on here, right? It's not that he's, we're saying you cannot build any. We're saying this is not within what the future of Columbia County needs to be. We have taken good steps to get, try to get a hold of our stormwater issues. We don't need to exacerbate those. Work within the existing zoning, work within the confines of what exists currently, and do the right thing. That should be easily done. Thank you very much.
He's coming up. Can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
On this map, the R1 below the proposed piece of property, how big is that? And is that usable, developable property right here where it says vacant, zoned R1?
I'm law, up here?
Yeah, which is...
Just north of it.
How big is it? I'm not sure. Our internet connectivity has not come back up, so I can't get...
Right.
I'm going to take their word for it. I tried to get on earlier to start pulling data, but the connection's still down.
This is 71. Please state your name and address for the record, sir.
My name is Robert Sanders.
Have five minutes.
I own the property at 4020 and 4018 Mulliken Road, which is across the street. Back up to the previous one. Right, the one with their lots. Okay, so basically, I own the property right here. As Woody has said a few minutes ago, my neighbor across the street, you have water comes in, goes down through here. But at the same time, all the ditches that come down this side of the road meet right here and then go underneath and add more water going in to that area, just like that. So it's not just the water coming off of there. You also have the water coming off of the opposite side of the road. I know because, like I said, I'm trying to get ready to build a house over there. And as the gentleman has said earlier, every time it rains, I'm fighting a battle trying to get my silt fence to keep water back. But right there in that area, it is just a flood every time it rains. It then goes into the ditch, like I said, and from the ditch, there's a huge pipe goes underneath the road straight into this property. You're going to have all that going in there also. Also, right now, he's proposing 55 lots. If you add two cars per lot, that's 110. Most homes have more than that nowadays. But adding another 110 on a road that is already highly congested with kids walking down the sidewalks and all trying to go to school, now you're going to add even more. When we first bought that property, one of the reasons we bought it was because of the fact we were told the Mullikens did not want that to ever become a subdivision, any of that land. And now we're looking at a possible subdivision. The planning committee already said, no, I hope that y'all will do the same. Thank you.
Seven acres.
What is the capacity? Traffic on Mulliken Road?
Two-lane road, but you could put, though they're not going to hear this, but it can carry 12,000 cars a day. That's a two-lane road. I understand these have driveways on them, these have neighborhoods on them, so it's going to be a lot more congested than that. I don't know the count. I can find it for you. One second. Keep going, I'll find it while you're going.
Bob, you want to speak? You know the drill.
I'm with 741 Rose Springs Lane. The reason, I don't have, I don't have a dog in the fight. I don't know the property. I've just listened to the time, but I have some personal experience. So we approved the Jackson Heights project next door to my private road. And the argument of cars, traffic, wildlife, those kinds of things not really resonate or keep that from happening. But there is an illusion, I think, about this 50-foot buffer that we talked about. I thought that sounded good for my property, but it turns out that you can denude everything all the way up to the property line. You just can't start the building of sort of structure until the 50-foot level, 50-foot back. So everything has been stripped from our land. And the other day, when I came home and there's really heavy rain, if I'd been in my BMW, I'd had to turn around and not drown. I could not drive down my road. But I was in a big truck, so I was able to get through there. But it has caused damage to my road two or three times. We've called 311. So I just see this as sort of a preview of coming attractions. It's already got a water problem. We're just going to have to deal with that now up front to make sure that if it really is a 50-foot buffer, it's a...
So Matt, in a fifty-foot buffer, developer allowed to clear the buffer?
No, sir.
Bobby may want to get with the county and...
This will be undisturbed. It depends on the buffer. So it depends on the kind of buffer that was in place with the other property. This is an undisturbed buffer, so you can't enter it at all.
Especially if it's required to be.
HOA property?
Property owner all the way back to here.
These are individual property owners. They can do what they want to once the developer is gone, and that's it.
Sorry. Get to that point.
Kara Wilson, and I live at one-one-five-four Hunter's Cove subdivision. And I agree with everything that everybody said. I'm driving from down this road all the time, and Hunter's Cove is an R2 subdivision, and we have forty-six houses in there. And, I mean, I, you know, I know the lot sizes and I know everything, but I mean, if you have this buffer on this track that he proposes to put in, and he has to, you know, shorten the backyards and that kind of thing, and maybe even reduce the number of homes he's proposing to put in there, I mean, why not just leave it R1 anyway, you know? And take care of your water, take care of the land like it needs to be taken care of? And we have an HOA that governs Hunter's Cove, and I mean, it's kind of a joke. I mean, they don't ride through and look and see if you cut trees down your buffer.
Come to my neighborhood.
I have a buffer, okay? I have a buffer. I could go to cut down every tree back there. And I know that maybe there'd be some kind of verbiage in there that would say they'd have to be more strict about it or look at it more closely or that kind of thing, but I mean, what are they going to do? I mean, they don't, they don't look at that kind of thing. The inspector that the HOA management company hires. So I'm for leaving it as an R1 in bigger, you know, lot sizes, you know, and just giving the value of everybody's property up down that road.
Thank you. Any other comments?
A Matt question.
Got your traffic counts, too.
Okay. Traffic counts first, and then I'll ask you a question.
So just to give you a growth issue, in November eleven of twenty fifteen, we had five thousand ninety-two cars go down the road in one day. Had a peak hour in the AM where four hundred eighty-four cars came across that traffic counter in one hour. That was our highest traveled hour that morning. In the evening, it was four forty-seven, the highest hour. So that was five years ago.
In twenty-eleven?
Twenty, November eleven, November of twenty fifteen, November eleven of twenty fifteen.
Five thousand?
Five thousand ninety-two. In February of this year, February fifth of this year, we had sixty-four hundred and twenty-three, so fifteen, fourteen hundred car increase, five years. And I unfortunately do not have the AM peak hour and the PM peak hour listed on our website.
Where's that counter, Matt?
It is between, it's just west of Con Drive, so we're trying to get all the traffic coming out of Sumter Landing, get all the school traffic. I think anybody trying to get down to the neighborhoods and the school have to cross that counter.
All right, the other question. Okay. So it's, somebody does cut it. What is, it's common ground, it's common, it's homeowner association?
Wants somebody lives there?
And somebody cuts it down behind your house.
It's on the HOA to enforce.
And what happens? Oh, I cut that oak that big round. What is?
I'll let Chris answer that. That's a legal question.
There are ways to work this.
They can find them.
To make it to where y'all would have a dog in the fight if that happened, but it depends. I mean, if it's a bill of the commission to approve this, there's ways, ways to make it to where y'all could enforce it and not just HOA.
But that would be done in magistrate court?
Yeah, that's right.
So?
They could still cut it down, and there's not much you can do about it after the fact. You can find somebody.
Maximum thousand-dollar fine. It might be worth a thousand dollars to cut it down.
Yeah. Right.
Mr. Schlester?
George Schlester, thirty-nine thirty-nine Mulliken Road. What really hasn't been mentioned, you've got five, actually, you've got six entrances to subdivisions off this road in a mile of road. There's no outlet into Mulliken Road. There's no outlet in Sumter Landing. So all the traffic comes in there, they can't go through. They got to come back out the same way. That has not been mentioned. It was briefly touched on about the emergency vehicles during school time. Kids are being picked up from school, could not get an emergency vehicle on Mulliken Road because the gridlock is so bad right there. I know you can't stop progress, but I think you could. Fifty-five more houses, it's too many houses, ram into that aisle section that's already got five subdivisions to it. Take that into consideration. Thank y'all.
Thanks, George. Any other comments?
Here, you raised your hand a second ago, did you?
I heard a lot of the comments, a lot of complaints. I understand where they all come from. I've been on the opposite side of the table and dealt with a lot of that. But everything that was mentioned is not anything that's not overcomeable. Drainage issues, I understand the drainage issues. All that can be collected and piped into a drainage system is done every day. Every piece of property that's built's got something uphill. Not everything's built on top of the hill. So everything's going to drain downhill into something else, and you have to collect that water and responsibly put it into a stormwater detention system. This site will have a detention system and will reduce runoff to prevent it from increasing downstream. That will reduce the impacts downstream. But the drainage can be handled. That's not, I don't think that's a deal of record that's an issue. All you have to do is design a storm system to handle it, and that can be done. We've got examples of that all over the county. As far as the wetlands go, the wetlands have been delineated by a professional wetlands delineator. We located the areas right there because we knew that was going to be a pinch point. That is point one-seven acres of impact to wetlands that we have shown there. That may change up or down once we go into the final concept plan when we have final field survey and we actually locate the wetlands delineator. But it's not going to go up above the point-five acre threshold, so we can submit for a nationwide permit to core engineers. And to address your comment earlier about building a road over wetlands, Willian Fuge is built right over the top of Blood Plain and Welland. So roads can be built on top of the wetlands, you just have to do it appropriately, and we can do that. As far as traffic goes, I think majority of the problems, and I have spoken with traffic engineering about this problem, is a lot of that has to do with the operations of the school and how they are stacking cars and allowing cars to get onto the roadway. If those cars are not on the roadway, traffic would not be the concern. Problem is, is when school is letting out and letting in, those cars stack up, and I think that's an internal problem with the school. And I think that traffic engineering has helped other schools fix that issue. And I can attest, I live in Carriage Hills, Stallings Island Middle School was the same way. They, where I believe they worked with traffic engineering on that and come up with a problem to solve the problem. And now it's not an issue where I can actually drive out of my neighborhood at three o'clock in the afternoon and I have a problem. And it's not backed all the way up to Fury's Ferry. So that can be addressed as well. And also, no one mentioned the GDOT project that's currently, I'm not quite sure how far along the plans are on there, but in the future, that entire intersection is going to be completely changed. And all of this will be addressed. We talked about traffic counts. A two-lane road can handle, we talked about six thousand trips. Peak hour was, what, five hundred? Two-lane road can handle that, no problem. And the amount that we're going to add in this trip generation will not be detrimental to the traffic at all. That will not be the issue. We can go through, we'll show all that in our design process as we go through that part of the procedures, through concept phase and final design to address all of that. So I think drainage is overcomeable. I don't think that's an issue, even if it's what we've got pointed right, if we're looking right down the barrel of a gun, we can still pick that drainage up, pipe it into our system. As far as lot sizes, these things are above anything R2 allows, so we're actually closer to R1. But to get R1, we would only yield about thirty lots. We could have yielded seventy-five lots, I think, in R2. We reduced that down so we could try to balance between the two to the fifty-five.
What could you? Get seventy-five lots on that piece of dirt, Gary?
I did a concept with seventy, I think it was seventy-three, to be honest.
Stacked on top of each other.
Minimum lot size.
Well, the lot sizes were way smaller. I mean, the lot size, you can go down to a ten thousand square foot lot. A lot of these lots are twelve thousand square foot.
What could you yield with R1A?
It'd be around thirty.
Is R1.
Yeah, it's kind of.
R1A.
And then another thing I want to bring up, too, is the fifty-foot buffer.
Fifteen thousand square foot.
With the fifty-foot buffers surrounding the lot, one of the reasons why this was done was, A, to provide visual screening because of the, some of the mass grading subdivisions in the area. We will not see any type of slopes like we've seen in Berkeley Hills and some of these other off Willian Fuge where you've got twenty, thirty-foot slopes. We won't have any of that issue here. This will actually be a nice sloping site. It wouldn't be a concern. Fifty-foot is undisturbed, whether it's in the property owner's ownership or if it goes to the HOA. And the HOA can write the covenants. And I don't know about y'all's HOA, but if I don't put my trash can up at night, I get a letter from HOAs, I think that they would make sure no trees get cut down here. And it could be written into the covenants that if it is disturbed, it would have to be restored. We've done that, like I said, on the other side of the table, on developers who've disturbed buffers. So that's also an option.
Thanks, Gary. I think we've heard most everybody speak. Any questions or comments?
What guarantee is there if we think this R2, that they don't switch it up and go back to seventy-plus lots after this?
Planning review?
Once it's zoned, it's done.
The concept plan would have to come back in for approval.
But then it's R2, and then the argument is, R2?
Right. So if you desire to put a limit on it, you could do that right now. Wanted to.
Make it R2 with fifty-five lots or whatever. I was going to ask Mr. Sterling, the planning director, because there was a recommendation for approval from staff to planning commission. Is that correct, right?
Yes, we, of course, give a staff report. You have it as part of your backup here. And from the planning department's perspective, it's in compliance with requirements of R2, does meet with the intent of the comprehensive plan for this area of the county. So you see our recommendation. Planning commission, of course, makes the recommendation to the board, so that's recommendation, planning commission's recommendation.
There are a lot of rooftops, concrete driveway, asphalt street, right here. I have a concern about stormwater. Folks in R1 that in other neighborhoods in R1 also have stormwater issues, a lot of concern.
Is there a motion in our future?
I guess so. This is a difficult one. As the chairman said, we have a very proud tradition in Columbia County of honoring private property rights. Tough to tell somebody that owns property that can't do what they want with that property. Most of us in that situation would not appreciate it dictated to. That being said, we do have a ruling body for a reason. We have zoning and planning as part of our operation in our community to weigh all the things. Staff's job is to look at the nuts and bolts. We have an advisory board of planning that looks at other concerns, and then the final decision falls to us. That being said, I'll make, I'll make a motion for all the reasons discussed here today to disapprove the request for rezoning from R1 to R2 for the property located at Tax Map zero-seven-seven-zero-five-zero.
Second.
Any other discussions or comments? All in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed? Four to one carries.
Is that a oppose or a late approve?
I'll leave it as opposed, but it failed four to one.
That's how I counted. Half, four to one.
Yeah. Half to disprove.
Can we all do half? Alrighty.
It's like a mail envelope.
Yeah, I mailed it, it might make it.
Hi, we just.
I got it, I got it.
I did take it while you were giving the presentation. I did take it.
Mr. Richardson, on to you.
At the mega netty, I was just handed this letter from developer after the vote.
That needs to be on the record, that we were given this letter after the vote was taken, not prior to the vote being taken.
So noted.
Is it appropriate for you to read it into record?
No.
Okay, just enter.
No, 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 just so we know that we've been given a letter from the developer after the vote was taken. That's good enough.
Thank you, sir.
We have been so served.
Doesn't matter now.
We need to keep on with this meeting.
All right, we're ready?
Yes, please.
I make a motion to approve a settlement agreement with Woodbridge Property Owners LTD in an amount of one hundred and thirty-six thousand, three hundred and thirty-four dollars.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Mr. Marley, I believe you have the last one.
Last one. I make a motion to approve the purchase of twenty-six network switches from Sienna in the amount of seven hundred and fifty-nine thousand, one hundred and sixty-two dollars and forty-eight cents.
Second. Bring that real quickly.
Just briefly, Mr. Chairman, we are in a position right now where we are facing some CARES Act funding, and the CARES Act funding is allowing us to recoup money that was spent during our COVID response. Part of the issue that we have with our COVID response is we have people that are teleworking now. We have a broadband network that the school is dependent on, and we found that our system could be very quickly overloaded if we did not upgrade the system. So we have the ability to upgrade these switches. Our current switches are limited to ten gigabits a second, and we're actually going to be able to get two hundred gigabit per second switches at the price of one hundred gigabit per second switches. So we're talking about very drastically increasing the speed of our network and the ability of our network to be able to support our school system, our county government operations, teleworking operations. And there is a caveat here that this is being funded by the CARES Act. There's a caveat that if we don't take delivery in time or if, if the funding is not approved, then we could cancel this order. Although I will say, there is other funding coming back from the CARES Act, and this is a very important purchase for our network. The need is going to be there regardless. So obviously, staff recommends approval of this purchase, and we're moving very quickly.
They've assured us that we'll be here by the time.
They have assured us that it'll be here, and so they're, I believe they're getting it from, they're gathering these switches from all over, but we have a really good feeling that they're going to be here in time. But we did need to get this item in front of you quickly. We are putting in our Phase One request for our CARES Act funding beginning tomorrow, and then we'll do that until the end of the month.
Mind him of the Domino's guarantee if it's thirty minutes or it's free.
That's right.
On the thirty-first, or it's free.
That's right. That's right.
I believe Mr. Kennedy has had to endure long hours of conference calls to help arrange this.
Accept it and say yes. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Any legal matters?
No legal matters.
Request for review by committee.
No, sir.
Public comments and participation. My gosh, is anybody left? No executive session. Only one piece of business left to do.
Chairman, I make a motion adjourned.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. We are adjourned.